Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. Just stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Chairman Bowman?
Here.
Any additions, relations, changes to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept?
The move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval. Now I'm going into actually...
Five?
Yeah, let's go on to meetings, previous meeting.
Um, I would move to support the minutes of the August 16th, 2012, and the August 23rd budget workshop and the September 6th Standing Committee be approved or filed in conjunction.
Support.
Discussion on any of these. Thinking on all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting had no proclamations. Item number seven, consent agenda.
I would move the approval of item 7A through 7D on consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, reports of standing and special committees. I'm gonna start down there with Commissioner Ward.
Roll call.
Howard?
Uh, we had the members of the MAC Region 7, um, down at the Fubus County Park Lodge, and representatives were there from Huron, uh, Sandusky, no, uh, Sandlot County, Tuscaloosa, and Lapeer. And MAC gave a presentation, and Commissioner Greathop and I were talking about, one of the things that they brought up was the diversity of costs for providing legal services for individuals through the courts. And, um, in some cases, our county is spending what I thought seemed like a lot of money compared to some of the other counties. But I think it's something we need to take a look at and see what they're doing that we're not doing, that we're spending.
Were you talking about the indigenous defense?
Yeah.
Somebody has come up with a formula of some sorts to determine how much you should be spending based on what, your population of your county and things like that. We were in the black, if you will, that we are spending enough if you follow this guideline. It said, "We are following, or we are spending enough." Some counties are not. If they were to implement this thing right now, Oakland County would have to make up $3 million that they're not spending. We were a little bit over, so...
Do some of the other ones have, do they, I know there's been discussion in the past about forms and things like that to fill out as far as to determine if they're indigenous. Do some of the other ones, do they have a...
That's something I think we really need to look into.
Okay. Now, let's move on. Terry?
Well, I attended the meeting too. I'll just get real quickly, there's, there was a lot of changes on the commissioners in, uh, in the other counties on MAC 5, so there's gonna be a new, a complete new board almost, uh, in January, so I'm just alerting you to, uh, the fact that there'll be some changes and so, uh, you'd be ready to make some, make some moves to, so we can have somebody there to represent St. Clair County would be, would be great. I just also mentioned real quickly that I attended the Road Commission meeting in Chinatown Township Tuesday as well. Um, and there were, uh, almost an hour of public comment, and, uh, the comments ranged mostly on complaints about drainage issues, but there were several, several other issues about the, the, the Road Commission and how they, how they handled the, uh, they hired out for dust control and had to enter contract for, for those individuals. And in fact, the people, the company that they, they hired and they released came there and, and argued, and so it was, it was, uh, it was a lot of activity going on back and forth with the, uh, uh, public consent, public comment area. And of course Kurt Westen did a great job in talking about thanking the, thanking the individuals for passing to the Road Commission, uh, in the last election, and so, just give you a couple of things that happened there.
David?
Yeah, just something real quick. I talked about it at committee meeting, but, uh, and it should affect some of the residents in Mossy, but the Riley Township, uh, the bridge there on Riley Center Road, this has been in the works for about seven years back when I was supervisor, but the millage that passed, uh, countywide, that 95% of the funds will help assist putting a brand-new bridge in there that will be starting to take place in the spring of next year and be completed by the summer. So that's one of the bridges. It'll be a 42-foot wide bridge. That's federal standards, and I talk to you after we're slated.
Okay.
No reports, sir.
Kind of gonna take a pass on mine, too. Um, citizens wishing to address the board, I do have one this evening. Erwin Cott, 3384, Breenham, uh, update on I-69 superhighway, where it says Ruby Center Road.
Oh, no, that's Riley Center Road.
Oh, Riley, I'm sorry.
But, well, I just wondered what's happening with I-69? It's supposed to be part of the huge super duper highway, five lanes one way, five lanes two ways. You guys have, I don't mean to, but do you have any information?
I wanna talk about that, Bill. First of all, the superhighway and the NAFTA highway, I don't know where that ever transpired from. We did have, and usually we don't respond, but just as a little update, so, we did have two one-hour meetings, and we did have a two-and-a-half-hour workshop that we actually had multiple people came in and question and answers and things like that, and, and this whole, um, I don't know where this thing got, you know, blown out of proportion, but that this big highway was coming through and, uh, farthest thing from the truth, I mean, there's been some pretty, some pretty crazy information about it. Would you like to talk a little bit about it, though?
One thing about it, too, it goes all the way out of Mexico up into Canada, and then you sneak over through here down I-69.
Well, there was discussion of that at one point, but the government hasn't acquired the right of way from the, for the highway to stretch from Mexico to here, that, that isn't, there isn't, it's not imminent that it's going to happen. What brought it to light was the I-69 interlocal agreement, which somehow people construed to have something to do with the highway, and it really didn't. The only thing it had in common was the name. That's it.
Yeah. Well, I just wondered how we're going to be, they wouldn't want to be fighting the bulldozer, you know, what's going to happen to the surrounding area.
I, I can tell you that, uh, the interlocal agreement that Commissioner Ward talked about is what's really transpired here, and it is really just an interlocal agreement to cooperate on economic development efforts all the way from the bridge to Shiahawassee County. Um, the, the, the communities have all come together, um, the state of Michigan has provided them with some grant funding to put together some marketing plans, try and market the region. Um, we have, as a result of this cooperative effort, we've received a lot of interest, a lot of interest, you know, a lot more people knocking on our doors saying, "We're a little bit more aware of you now, and we understand what opportunities exist in this area, and we'd like to talk to you a little bit more about potentially locating a business or an industry or some kind of facility." So we are getting a lot more interest as a result of just this joint effort to market all of the communities along that particular stretch of highway.
You didn't, yeah, so it's nothing to do with NAFTA?
No, no. It's got nothing to do with any improvements or changes to the expressway, just a joint agreement to work together on marketing our area for jack creation.
I can only hear you.
Yes.
No. I mean, it's bad enough, I only live a mile north of the highway, and I says, it's almost like being in Detroit, you know, I wake up in the morning and I hear, I hear something. Before, I just heard silence, and a nice dewy morning, really you can hear the rushing of the traffic back and forth. And the other thing, I want to make it real quick, you guys recovered Riley Center Road there from Burke down to Riley Center, and, uh, you go down, you know, where they, where they didn't patch it up before. Take a ride down there, if you guys want, just take a ride down there.
Okay, I'm very familiar with that. I talked with the Riley Township elected officials there, and I'll be talking to Kurt on that, but what they did, they kinda did a cover-up. Now, when they do do the bridge, they'll probably get a complete resurfacing next year. Right now, that's, uh, 'cause it was getting ruptured, they had a lot of cracks, and that was just a patch job.
When they did cover up the cracks, though, I mean, that's still bumpy. Yeah, it was still bumpy. I don't know how to do that. I mean, when they put this new coating on, that's always, they cover bumps up.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just on the corridor, one, one other point I'd like to make on that, that was an initiative began, began with the legislature, and when Granholm was governor, and then, this is not a political statement now, but it was renewed by our new governor now, and the legislature is trying to give us the opportunity to figure out if we can, if we can bring jobs to St. Clair County and the, and the, and the surrounding Lapeer County and on out through Shiahawassee where the, where the airport is, and so, it's just, it's a job initiative that was passed by the legislature. We have representatives from all the townships and the cities of all the, uh, areas in those, those five counties, so they're trying to bring jobs, and that was initiative.
Okay, gentlemen, as Sergeant Bowman's, I'm gonna have to bring this discussion to an end.
Okay. Any other citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Saying none, we're gonna move on to unfinished business? No unfinished business. We're gonna get into our new business. It may seem like we go through these fairly quickly, but all these items were actually discussed in our committee level, and then we actually pass them on to full board to vote on them, so it seems like we're going through things quick. We had, you know, a fairly lengthy meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding them. But, uh, item number A, introduction of the village officials, Steve, this is your...
Do you have any village officials present? We'd ask you to stand and introduce yourselves, please.
Ms. Highgraffine, President of Pro Town, as a village council.
John Graves, I'm a House member. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you. It's always nice to get out and travel around and see the different places here. Item number B, private county disbursements.
At this time, I'd make a motion to approve the County of St. Clair disbursements to the month of August 2012 in the amount of $30,223,837.16.
Second?
Discussion. Thinking on all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemon?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
Moving on to item number C, the deputy mental examiner appointment, and trivial...
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move at this time to add Dr. Mary Pia Trangelope to serve as deputy medical examiner as recommended by Dr. Daniel Spitz of the St. Clair County Medical Examiner's Office.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, item number D, the library board reappointment.
This time, Chairman, I would ask that we consider appointment of, reappointment of Kathleen Rehm at the St. Clair County Library Board of Independence District III with term expiring on 8/26/2017.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Kathleen is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, she's, uh...
Thank you for your years of service.
Very familiar, how long have you been on that board, Kathleen?
Kathleen, I'll stand and say a few words. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Well, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to continue the work that we're doing. Um, and actually, you're in the township, um, fire hall, you didn't address the township officials.
Okay.
As well as, the K-PAC library is a branch of Port Huron Library, and if we close before, finish here before 8:00, it would be really beneficial for you to visit that facility and see what kind of little nice little branch we have here.
Could we introduce the township?
Yeah.
Any other township?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number E, the health department plan of organization approval.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the 2012 Plan of Organization for the St. Clair County Health Department of Accreditation.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a record roll call on this. I intend to vote no on it, uh, for a number of reasons, mainly because it's almost doubling our fee and, uh, for the temporary licenses, and I wanna make sure that I'm on record to vote no.
You're ahead.
I'm not the wrong one?
Yeah, you're on the wrong one there. This is a...
You can still vote a lot more.
Yeah.
Forget everything I said.
We'll remind you when it's time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Item F, the temporary food service license fee increase.
I would like to move to approve the temporary food service license fee increase to $92 plus the $8 state fee, and the nonprofit fee of $52 plus the $5 state fee, and the late notification fee of $46 and $26 respectively.
Support.
Now, can I ask Mr. Chairman for a record roll call? Any, about any more discussion on this, Bill? David?
I have quite a bit on this. I talked to Steve extensively on this, and any time, 'cause this, to me, is gonna be a tax. And what I asked him for, he gave us a pretty good breakdown for expenses for the last three years. Previous, he gave us a rec, uh, record at a committee meeting of one year, and if you read his two letters that he sent to us, he breaks it down. One goes up to $93.98. For 250 inspections, we're gonna be needing approximately $23,000. If you go to the other figure he gave us, we'd be over $26,000, and this would only raise $18,000. What I asked him to do is give us the actual expenses that the county is incurring for these inspections, because, talking to old Greathop, at some of our, uh, events throughout the county, sometimes we'll make 16, 20 inspections at one location, and I don't wanna raise fees unless we have the exact cost that's being incurred by the county. That way, we can justify the cost. Without that, I don't know how we can justify any fee increases. I wanna know the exact cost, 'cause right now, even with the fees he's wanting to charge, it's gonna be above and beyond what he's actually asking.
The, the cost to provide the service is going to be more than he's asking?
Yes. Take his figures, $93, make it $94, times it by 250. Revenue he wants to generate, he says, is gonna be $18,000. He's saying its inspections are over $23,000.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. I was thinking he wasn't charging enough.
Well, I wanna know what the exact expense is, so if we're paying employees to do these inspections, let's get the exact cost so we can get the correct fees to be charged for this, so to make sure that the county is charging enough. This 93 might not be enough, and I don't want him to come back to this board next year and say, "Well, I misfigured," and get, I'd rather put this off and have him give us the figures of the actual cost to the county.
Because we get nothing back from the state.
I, I just wanna, I don't wanna overcharge or undercharge. I wanna collect the cost, so, that's my point.
I had a comment, Jeff. I was interested in seeing some provision for small fundraising operations, some threshold or maybe a bit of a sliding scale. You know, if you're gonna have a very small food operation for a very small charity, you know, why would you, I think we should cover that or address that rather than...
You wanna just table this and maybe bring them in on a workshop and have a little bit more discussion, and we'll work through it a little bit more with them? Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay.
I move to table it.
Second?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Uh, the emergency management grant, performance grant agreement, item G.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2012 Emergency Management Performance Agreement, the amount of $39,923 with no local match.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Uh, item number H, the interagency agreement with Community Mental Health, Intervention Center Mental Health Coordination.
Yeah, I would like at this time to move to approve the interagency agreement between the Community Mental Health Authority and the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office for Intervention Center Mental Health Coordination in the amount of $53,901 for the period of October 1, 2012 through September 20, 2013.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
Item number I, the intergovernmental service agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Immigration, and Customs Enforcement.
At this time, I'd make a motion to approve the agreement between the Sheriff's Office and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Immigration, and Customs Enforcement for the detention and care of detainees at a rate of $82 per day detainee based on a five-year contract, with the ability to renegotiate at a rate after 36 months.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, uh, the, item J, the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Application, 2013...
At this time, I would move to approve the, uh, year-end 2013 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Application, the amount of $228,784, period, October 1st, 23th through September 30th, 2013.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, item number K, the Blue Water River Walk Acquisition Grant.
This time... Point of work, if you could, Jeff, to say, this previous item, the I, Intergovernmental Service Agreement, did have a monetary figure. Is that a viable call?
I just think it's the rate that we're accepting. I don't necessarily know if it was a...
It was unanimous, so I suppose there were no names, but...
I mean, truthfully, we don't, it's not like we can tell them, we're not accepting it. They told, they basically told us, "This is what you're getting paid for, for..."
If you have any record, we should reflect it, was it all used anywhere, so that was...
Aye.
Thanks.
Item K, at this time, I'd like to move to approve the Michigan National Resources Trust Grant for the Blue Water River Walk Expansion Project for 2.75 acres of land in Resolution 1229, approving the $150,000 local match from the Park and Recreation Millage Fund.
Second?
Any discussion or comments on this?
Just a, a comment that, uh, once we accept this funding to develop that area down, uh, on the, what the actions and property and the community foundations putting together, it is in the public hands in perpetuity. And, uh, so this, this is a big item because at that point, people will be guaranteed access, public access to the St. Clair River.
Yeah, I know they've already had a substantial amount of money secured to do that project, Bill?
Uh, I don't have the information in front of me, but I believe that there's a, some sort of a ceremony that's gonna be taking place on it. Does anybody have the date that we can announce at some point?
October 10th, I think?
October 11th.
11th.
Was an email.
Yeah, October 11th, and, uh, Congresswoman Miller's gonna be there?
Correct.
And do the presentation of the, uh, $2 million...
11th at time.
Okay, I've got it 10 o'clock. Doesn't mind.
The $2 million grant to redo the river coastline.
Okay, thank you. Put that out.
Okay. Uh, roll call on this.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number L, the Fort Grasset Light Station ADA Walkways, Beach, and Interpretive Panel Project.
Uh, I would move the, uh, approval of the Fort Grasset Light Station ADA Walkway, benches, and interpretive panel project, and award the bids for construction of the same to D&amp;E Landscaping enrichment in the amount of $23,625.55, and the purchase of panel materials to Penn near Pennsylvania in the amount of $4,762, both subject to MDEQ grant staff approval.
I would support that.
Discussion.
Just a little bit, I know we brought up at the committee meeting in regards to the BMJ engineering cost, there's some additional cost on that. Where are we picking that up? Are we gonna need to have an additional motion? We talked about this at the committee meeting. Are we gonna need...
It says at the bottom of the memo that two professional service proposals were approved, the project design administration not to exceed, um, all the, and that brings the whole contract of $38,457.55. I'm wondering if we should just make our motion up to that amount, and that way, for sure, we're covered.
Yeah, that's what it takes, to make sure that this project's completed, that funding for those two parts of the project are included.
Would you change your motion and...
I would confirm with that change to the motion.
Not to exceed $38,000?
I think the grant, the grant...
Yeah.
Let's see that number. Uh, $38,457.55. Thank you.
Okay, now I had a second on that. Uh, any more discussion?
Chairperson, just to add a little more confusion to this.
Okay.
Um, the director of Parks and Rec approached me and asked if the board would be willing, remember, the original grant was $60,000, $60,344. The bids have come in significantly lower. If you remember the presentation that was made by one of the Parks and Rec Commission staff members at your committee meeting two weeks ago, they indicated that they were working with the D&amp;R to see if they could expand and actually do more paving, ADA paving, than what they originally thought they could do because the bids came in so low. So what the Parks and Rec director would like to know is, can he get approval from the board commissioners to spend up to the $60,000 for additional sidewalk work, ADA sidewalk work? Um, that would be reviewed and approved by the change order committee, but not have to come back to the board for that approval. So in other words, you'd be approving changes up to the original grant amount, $60,000, and still require that each of those change orders come back to the change order committee, which is made up of the number of you, to review and approve before you'd be allowed to execute that additional work.
Could, could I make a recommendation?
Yes.
That, that we go ahead and act on this motion, and then consider that as a separate motion.
Okay. Uh, going back to the first motion, roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Hold on a second. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Sorry, I just asked a quick question.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Now, I guess, on the second part of that, Howard?
Yes. I would move that we approve the Park and Rec Commission to spend up to the amount of the grant, sixty-thousand dollars, for additional ADA walkways, benches and interpretive panels at the Fort Grasset Light Station.
Support?
Now, we were discussing whether or not this would have to be noticed as a separate motion. Now, it's not an agenda, it's not an amendment or addition to the previous motion, it's now a separate new motion. Can we do that next time around? Can we set it down? Is there some urgency on that?
I don't think there's any urgency. Howard?
If you could, I don't know if it's possible that we could table this, because I have trust that they're going to do what's in the best interest of Park and Rec and the county. But just to take that extra money and put walkways in, will potentially, us commissioners say, that doesn't look very good. I'd like to review it first.
For committee and then for the vote.
Does, is it a time-sensitive deal where he has to have it by a certain time? Okay. Why don't we just do that? And then if he comes before us, we can just do it right at the...
I would table Howard's motion.
Yeah, withdraw, just withdraw the motion.
I would table it, because then we can take it up.
Really, it's not on your agenda, so...
If you just withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw, support.
Chairman?
Just a quick question, maybe this is for Bill, but, or whoever, but if they do spend that extra money, they've already submitted for the grant, they already have the grant, can they spend the money on what they want to spend it on without violating the use agreement of that particular grant?
Well, the, the type of work that they're doing could still be permitted under the grant.
So they wouldn't have to get permission from the grantor?
No, they would have to go back to the grantor and get the agreement, because the agreement probably includes a certain number of square feet of sidewalk that would be done. Because the bids came in lower, we can now do more square footage, so there will be a minor amount of it.
Okay, that, just to make sure that that gets taken care of so that we don't find out we violated somewhere.
Just an additional comment, particularly in response to Commissioner Rush, Rushing's question. All of the changes that we make out there have to be approved by the National Committee and State Committee that oversees the whole development, because we have to be bringing that back to 1936 standards. And so, when we submit a plan for a walkway or anything, it has to be approved. It can't, we just can't come in there and say, we're putting sidewalk here.
The way I understood Bill's comment was that the Park and Rec Committee would actually be making those decisions.
The Change Order Committee, which is... Yeah. Chairman, myself, Joe.
Okay. Let's move on. Item number M, the St. Clair County International Airport Contract with MDOT for Weather Observation and Data Dissemination System.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt Resolution 1227 and approve the three-year contract with MDOT Bureau of Aeronautics and the County of St. Clair, Michigan, for the operation maintenance of the Automatic Weather Observation System at the County International Airport.
Support?
Roll call, please.
Question, person?
I can say yes.
On that first page there, it mentions that the cost of this service to pilots is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven ninety-two per month, and is included in the airport budget each of, the cost of which pilots, the two-hundred, who pays two-hundred-and-eighty-seven ninety-two a month?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars?
Says the cost of this service to pilots is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents per month, and is included in the airport...
That's in the airport budget?
Budget.
Yes.
Who pays?
We, the airport budget does. Yes.
It's cost to have that, the weather system.
So every pilot gets to use that, you pay the fee?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I thought you were charging the pilots the way it was worded. Okay.
So you pay the fee to MDOT?
Yes.
And then the pilots get the weather reports?
Yes.
Okay.
David?
Good. Just roughly, what is the estimated cost from the county in your budget for the number of pilots?
Actually, we pay it according to basis. Oh, per pilot?
No, at the estimate budget line for that, out of the...
It's two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars per month? No.
Per month.
Just for everybody, for everybody, across the board. Or anything.
Roll call.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number M, the Second Amendments to the 2012 General Fund and Prosecutor's Forfeiture Special Revenue Fund Budgets.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the 2012 General Fund and Prosecutor's Forfeiture Special Revenue Fund Budgets as presented.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number O, the Architectural Agreement with Design Plus for the Convention Center.
At this time, make a motion to approve the architectural contract with Progressive AE, is what the memo says, as I would ask for some interpretation on that, in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I think Progressive AE bought Design Plus, so the contract, even though the agenda says Design Plus, that's, Progressive AE is a successor of that.
I would support that motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
Item number P, the Food and Beverage Catering Agreement with OCM Development.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Food and Beverage Catering Agreement with OCM Development LLC for a three-year period, beginning upon the opening of Phase Two of the Convention Center.
Support?
Discussion.
Roll call. Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Sam, sorry, Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
Item number Q, the Professional Service Agreement for Convergence Design.
Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Professional Service Agreement with Convergent Design LLC for architectural consulting services relating to the Blue Water Area Convention Center project in the amount of thirty-thousand dollars for the period of 8/1/12 through 7/31/14.
Support?
Discussion. David?
Just a little, I brought this up at the committee meeting, under 7.6, just permits and licenses, and we discussed that it has nothing to do with, there will be no permits or license applied for? Why is it in the contract? Page seven, 7.6, we discussed this at the committee meeting, and I asked the attorney then, and we don't have one present today, but why do we have something in the contract if it doesn't apply? Who would have in the contract? Contracts shovelled, principal for obtaining and maintaining throughout the term of this contract all licenses, permits, certificates, and governmental authorization is necessary to perform all of its obligations under this contract and to conduct business under this contract. On request of the county, contractor shall furnish copies of any permit, license, certificate or governmental authorization is necessary to provide services under this contract. Just a...
Is this your body of plate contract stuff that we use for...
It is, but this section pertains to they maintaining their professional licensing permits that allow them to operate. In many states, professional services are licensed by the state of Michigan. This requires them to maintain their licensing, their permitting, as necessary in order for them to deliver the service to us.
Okay, so, I think, remember the question I asked for attorney? He said it didn't, didn't pretend to have been at all.
But he said they are not required to pull any permits.
The response I got at that, at the committee meeting was that they weren't responsible to do any of that. That's the answer I got at our committee meeting, so I thought it might be cool. I'm sort of twice questioning.
Any more discussion?
Roll call. Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
Item number R, Resolution 12-28, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Issuance of the Liquor License for the Convention Center.
Mr. Sheriff, I would move to approve Resolution 12-28, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission issue insurance for the... Blue Water.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Next question, Joe.
Yes.
There's a provision in here that the licensee is the, who is the county, that the OCM Development is a participant pursuant to a statutory citation. I meant to check that. Do you know at the bottom, what it means to be a participant according to MCL 46559? Explain that to me.
Well, I'm simply not familiar with that particular law, but what I can tell you is that I mean, I'm a participant. Yes.
They're going to be selling liquors and substances over the company license in our half, in our part of the facility.
Right.
So if that's all it is, I wouldn't have much of a concern.
Correct, because they are actually doing the serving and not you, they must be considered a participant on the license.
Is that an exclusive arrangement? Does that limit any other, us remaining other arrangements to do so?
No, and this particular license, that would give them exclusive. Now, the county would still have the right to serve as well, but if somebody else came and decided they wanted to step in and provide a service...
The county would preserve the right to designate other agents of the county to conduct liquor sales?
Correct, on their behalf, yes.
I just, I guess I'd like to completely, I would table that, I would table that to get some information from Gary on that. Just, I meant to look at it, I didn't, if it's easily accessible, I just want to make sure. Liquor licenses are very valuable, I don't want that liquor license tied up with some of their rights from some third party that really may or may not be around the turn next thirty years. And I didn't ask that question at committee, and I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Is it time-sensitive at all?
Doesn't that have to be approved by the state?
Well, I don't know.
It has to be, I mean, we're applying for the liquor license.
We are the licensee, it's clear from that, it says OCM Development is a participant according to the certain statute section, I meant to check it, I just didn't get around with it, and I would just think it would be safe to table it for one month and do it next month, and I just wanted to look at it myself.
Or in two weeks. I would move that we table it.
Actually, I have to read it second.
Oh, okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number S, the Medicare Advantage.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the Medicare Advantage Program with an inflammation date of 1/1/2013.
Support?
Discussion on this. Keep this one on for a year and a half, Tom.
Just give, Bill, can you give us an update or at least a commentary on what that amounts to, to your benefit audience?
Sure. What this basically does is it moves our post-sixty-five retirees from a self-insured healthcare program, which the county currently has, to a fully insured healthcare program. Currently, the post-sixty-five retirees, Medicare is their primary provider, the county is secondary, that will remain the same. The only difference is that it's moving from a self-insured to a fully insured. The result to the county is, by buying an insurance policy instead of insuring it ourselves, we are saving approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars a year in health expenses to the retirement healthcare fund, so that's a pretty significant savings to the county. The county did work very closely with Blue Cross Blue Shield to ensure that the program that was designed, and the coverage that would be provided, mirrors what they currently receive, what the retirees currently receive. It seems as though it's going to be a fairly seamless transition into a new program effective January 1st, 2013.
Uh, let's do a roll call on this.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Administrator's report, Mr. Johnson.
The, I guess before we leave the issue of Blue Cross Blue Shield and Medicare Advantage, after, if you recall, after the presentation that was made last week, or two weeks ago, by Blue Cross Blue Shield, the retirees went to a room with Blue Cross to spend time answering questions. I can tell you that every single question that was asked was answered by Blue Cross. Everyone left the room fully informed, they seemed to be all pleased with the change and understanding that there will be no financial impact upon themselves. The biggest concern and questions that seemed to come from those who were there related to when will the program begin picking up their curves and their silver sneakers expenses? So many of them wanted to start it sooner, yes. So this is a very significant increase in the type of wellness activities that would be made available to them and certainly lose them at that cost. So they seem to be very pleased with that, so that went very well. The rumors that continue to circulate regarding retirement healthcare don't seem to be able to be put to rest. Today, the HR department received yet another call from someone who is getting ready to retire, and they had heard through the grapevine from another retiree that effective January 1st, 2013, the War of Commissioners was ending all healthcare for all retirees. That obviously is not true. They were corrected and urged to spread the word to others that may be mistaken. We're doing everything we can to ensure that existing retirees understand what the changes are and how it will affect them, as well as alerting those who are close to retiring or contemplating retiring, what kind of an impact this will or will not have under healthcare benefits. So I don't know that we'll ever be able to end the rumor mill, but we're trying to address them as they come up.
Just to add to that, I can tell you, I've been to the retiree luncheon four different times in the last year and a half. Many of you know, we held a series of one-hour sit-down workshop, probably fourteen to sixteen of them on a regular basis. Spent a lot of time on this issue, educating and going through. Had the consultant, I, you know, I feel, you know, not excited we have to make these changes, but there's things that we have to do, but on the flip side, I feel very good about the amount of time and energy that we put into this, and doing our absolute best to educate these people on them, so I don't think we could do anything...
Jeff, the consultants from Plant Run, did he moderate those meetings?
Yeah.
I was to a couple of those.
Yeah, yeah, very good, Joe Rankin, and so, I mean, to say we're good, for somebody to say that we're cutting their healthcare out after, like I said, we, you know, went to many, and many, and many, and many, and many meetings, so...
And the fact that it's saving...
There were many other options that were much worse than what we've done, that's for sure.
The savings to the county going to be eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, that's quite a, quite a number, and...
With the same coverage, too.
That's right, for the same.
Earlier today, we held our weekly Convention Center Progress Report. Every Thursday morning, those that are involved in this project, including Baker College, the folks that purchased the Edison Inn, the city, a number of others that were involved, get together to talk about where we're at and how things are moving along. What we're going to be doing is, is working and developing a more formalized way of reporting out to you and to the community as well, on how things are moving along. But I'd like to share with you today a little bit, just a couple of things that came out of today's meeting. The convention and visitors bureau announced that they are getting a lot of calls already, people that want to reserve the use of the facility. Unfortunately, we can't give them a date when they, when they'll be available, but we're taking the information from them, and we will be sharing things with them as time goes by. But this certainly tells us is that we've got to get moving on developing some of the marketing material, so we can at least send material out to these people periodically, so when we're a year out, or even a year and a half out from opening, we can let them know and they can begin reserving the use of the facility. The construction manager for the county's project gave a report on exactly what's going on with the Thomas Edison Inn, and those of you that they go by periodically will begin to notice that they're going to be clearing an area around the facility, and that's to allow them access, but again, making some renovations to the outside, taking But again, making some renovations to the outside, taking care of some maintenance that has been put off for a number of years, things like tuck flooring and cleaning up the brick and getting rid of some odd again replacing sockets. We will begin seeing that work and assuming that some of the trees and bushes are going to be moved in there. The renovation sale that began last week, I understand they had over 3,000 people in the facility last weekend in a two-day period, and believe it or not, people are even buying the carpet off of the floor in rooms. So they are buying anything. They reported today, they found in a desk drawer a bunch of campaign buttons related to a casino vote that occurred, I don't know how many years ago, and they were selling the buttons for a buck a piece.
Howard, did you get your button?
I, I missed that purchase.
So the program is moving along very well. Baker is, is very close to having all of their documents completed and begin fitting their work. You will see a notice in the paper, in the Times Herald, a half-page ad very soon directing any contractor or supplier in the county that's interested in getting involved in the project, directing them to a website where they'll be able to go on, register themselves, and begin the process of prequalifying themselves for participating in the work. So keep your eyes peeled, keep a Times Herald and an ad that you will see located. Let me see. A reminder that the lobby group, SFA, will be providing an update on state and federal legislation on the Tuesday, the 25th, from 10:00 to 12:30. I believe a number of you have been contacted and decided to attend that meeting. Staff will be there as well to share with you a little bit of information on the grant writing work that SFA will be doing for us now under the contract we have with them. The County Planning Commission has announced their fall workshop, which is scheduled for October 30th in Corcoran. They'll be talking about broadband access throughout the county and some of the research and work that they have been doing with Connect Michigan. They're also providing a, a, a program on redevelopment-ready communities. The flyer has been sent out to most all of the local community planning commissions as well as township supervisors, township, city, and village clerks. So if you're interested in the program, you can ensure that we send you a copy of the flyer and you can share it with your communities. The actuarial report, you may recall, the county has changed their actuaries this year for the Pension and Healthcare Fund. NiHAR is the new firm. They've been accumulating about 10 years' worth of data on employees and retirees. They have reported at the pension board meeting earlier this week that the actuarial report for end of year 2011 will be made available to the county in early November. The pension board is scheduling a date for when NiHAR will begin to make that presentation. We will ensure that all of you are given an invitation. Many of you have attended in the past. It is a very important report. I want you to keep in mind, we could have a new actuary this year, so you may see some numbers a little different because they may take a different approach to how they develop their projections than Gabriel Roder didn't.
And why did we make that change, Bill?
We've been using Gabriel Roder for probably about, I don't know, 15, 20 years. Never really bid that service out. We decided to send it out for bid, see if we could get a better price, a better, a better product, some additional services that they might offer that Gabriel Roder didn't, and perhaps encourage Gabriel Roder to take a closer look at, at their fees and the services that they provide.
Is that an administrative decision or did the retirement board participate in that decision?
They participated in it as well, and they played a role in developing the RFP. That went out and actually reviewing the proposals that we received.
Thank you.
Questions for Bill and all?
Just one comment, or Bill, maybe you could mention. In the paper, there was a, a story about the bond rate and the savings that would be. Can you just go over that a little bit with us?
Sure. Actually, I will defer to Carrie if you can.
Sure.
Because she worked directly with the bond company and the bond relief agencies.
Yeah, our initial projections on our interest rate was about conservatively four and quarter, and we came in at 3.73, so that'll save about 44,000 a year off our interest payments over the life of our home.
So instead of 5.50, it'll be 500 something in average?
It, it varies from year to year, but on average, yes.
Well, it goes down. Every year it'll go down.
It goes good, yeah.
No, but what I'm saying is each year, the interest expense will go down as the principal's repaid. So it may start out at 5.15, but every year it'll go down a little bit. It's going to start lower, and each successive savings will be...
Is, is that interest rate flat for the, for the term of the, of the bond?
The interest rate fluctuates by year. That's the average rate over the life of the bond.
Bottom line is, we saved a little bit.
Yes.
Carrie, the way those usually work, is it each year has a set rate?
Yes.
So the rate isn't subject to change. It's just that there's, if it's a 30-year bond, there's 30 interest rates that average 3 point whatever it is.
So it is locked in?
Yes. Oh, yeah, it's not variable, but it is a different rate every year.
Well, it's the...
Overall, it's guaranteed.
When you say it's a different rate every year, each year, each year, like there's a, there's a 30-year rate, there's a 29-year rate, there's a 28-year rate on down the line. So when you say each year, each, each piece has a different interest rate.
Actually, every cost is fixed.
Right.
Yes.
Howard?
I, I have a constituent to ask. Is this a tax-free municipal bond that if they were to buy at date? Okay, excellent. That, I think we had some constituents that want to invest.
David?
Just one, I just think it's important to say, because you say it's going to save us 44,000 annually. Quick math, we're going to save 1.32 million over the life of the payments to the county. So Convention Center is an important issue for the county, and the savings is important also. Want to bring it up?
Want to change some of your votes? Just have a roll call.
Receiving, I got a motion, receiving file, administrators report.
All right, Ms. Laney's business, not receiving file.
Motion.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion, Mr. Bowman.
All in favor, support, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank you guys for all making your trip to the other side of the county here all the hard pressures, and now that you know where kickback is, we have a car show this Sunday, the Shoals Car Show. Anyone ever gone to it? It's a very hard show.
Where is it?
It's at the school grounds where the Shoals...
2,000 cars.
2,000?
Yes.
It's one of the hardest things in the state to ever do. And also, we have nice cars, so the women that fill the rain, puts on a good chicken barbecue here Sunday, so if you come around to that. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Renew my motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.